All things meeting to order, welcome you all to the January 3rd meeting of the Bloomfield Township Planning Commission. We have the distinction of being the very first meeting in Bloomfield Township for 2024. This kicks off the year. And before I go any further, I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy new year.
Same to you.
Happy new year. Just so someone who's joining us maybe for the first time or watching it. We are the Planning Commission. We're a seven-member body. We're appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees. All volunteers living in Bloomfield Township residents. We're a recommending body to the Board of Trustees. What we vote on, we will vote here perhaps and pass or not an item on the agenda. But it's just advisory to the Board of Trustees who have the final say. And they'll meet there. On tonight's agenda, we have a site plan and a special land use request for construction of a new primrose childcare center at 6255 Telegraph Road, just north of Maple. Any motion has to be passed by four members of this board. And since we have a quorum, we can do business. And the first item before we start on the agenda, those items is the approval of the minutes of way back in September. Was it September 18th was our last meeting?
Mr. Chair?
We've all had an opportunity to look over the minutes.
Mr. Chair, we have one more item to do before the minutes.
Oh, swearing in.
Yes, we do.
I'm sorry. You're right. John Kelly, right?
And tonight we have Dina Mondock, our deputy clerk, who's here on behalf of the township to swear in John. So John, if you could stand, please. You could stand right there.
Very good.
Me, to the right hand, and repeat after me, please. I, John Kelly.
I, John Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution for the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution for the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Planning Commission.
As a member of the Planning Commission.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Term expiring.
Term expiring.
January 1st, 2027.
January 1st, 2027.
All right, so back to approval of the minutes. We all read them, had an opportunity to read them in the packet. Are there any corrections? Any comments? If not, I'd like a motion to approve.
Approve.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public comment. Does anybody want to, anybody here want to make a public comment of anything, anything at all? And I don't see any. So now we'll go to the public hearing or the presentation of the site plan. Andrea.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Andrea Bibby from the Planning Division at Bloomfield Township. And what we have before you this evening is a request for a site plan and also a special land use. The site location is highlighted here on your screen. You can see an aerial of it highlighted here in the red outline. This property, the aerial is actually showing the site which is currently vacant. It is showing the site prior to St. Andrews Church, which is located, this is 6255 Telegraph. So we are on the east side of Telegraph, north of Maple. So you can see the property at 6255 highlighted here on your screen. The property itself is zoned RM, which is multiple-family residential. And within the multiple-family residential classification, childcare centers are considered a special land use. So the request before you is to occupy the more northerly portion of this now vacant lot at 6255 Telegraph Road. Switching over to the zoning map, you can see highlighted within the, again, within the red identifies the subject parcel. The subject parcel is, adjoins Cranbrook Chase condominiums to the north. A senior housing, Samaritan Senior Housing, located immediately to the east of the site. And then, which I think recently has been going through a name change, the Samaritan. I think there's been a change in the name as of recently. I think it is now American House as of very recently. But it's still senior housing development, which is located immediately east to it. And then you can also see that there's a portion of the senior housing facility that kind of hugs just immediately to the south of the site. That's important to point out because within our zoning ordinance, childcare facilities are permitted when surrounded by multiple-family zoning. So the use in the location are special land use and are actually do meet the criteria falling within the multiple-family classification. So what you have specifically as it relates to the request, we have an application from the 814 team. Bloomfield LLC is the property owner. And they're looking to construct a one-story, 13,525-square-foot childcare facility. As I stated earlier, the site was previously occupied by St. Andrews Church, which was recently demolished. The proposed development, as you can see here on your screen, we are highlighting the site plan itself on the site. And you will notice when you look at this that the southerly portion of the site is vacant. The applicant is interested in and is currently marketing the southerly portion of that site. And I just want to make it clear for the board in understanding that any future use of the southerly portion, any site plan, any use that would be proposed here would go through the regular planning process. It would come before the Planning Commission, ultimately the Township Board. So I just want to make that clear. But as of right now, the intent is to leave that southerly portion of the property vacant for a future user. So today we are looking at specifically how the criteria within our zoning ordinance is met standalone for this childcare facility. So within our, before I get into the site plan, the details, we do have, our zoning ordinance does have certain criteria in place for the such of land use of a childcare facility. One of which is that it cannot include dormitories, so there's no overnight stay. This proposed daycare will serve children ages six months to six years and will operate Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. They do have other sites within the area. I will ask, the applicant can certainly answer any questions about the use in the primrose facility and other locations as well. But I do want to note that they are other locations of this use. Another criteria for daycare facilities is that there shall be provided and maintained for each child area, a minimum of at least 100 square feet. The applicant is providing on the site plan on the exterior of the building, they are providing a total of 9,565 square feet of outdoor play area. There's actually three areas designated, and I can get into that when I get more into the site plan. But they do meet that qualification as well as having at least that much a square footage of play area, which is required. Another requirement within our ordinance for childcare facilities is that the overall play area should have at least 2,000 square feet. And the play area shall be fenced and shall be screened from adjoining land with plantings. When I go into the landscape plan, I will show you where the play areas are and that the applicant is providing evergreen screening along the perimeter of the play area. Specifically to the north, where they abut the Cranbrook Condo Association, there is an existing eight-foot masonry wall, which will remain. So I just want to point that out as well. And then lastly, the criteria for this type of use within our ordinance is that any use permitted here and shall be in the interior of a multiple-family district and shall not abut any one-family residential or non-residential district. They, as I stated earlier, and as you look at the zoning map, they were able to meet that criteria. So that has been satisfied as well. One more thing to point out, which is part of your staff report as well, is that because this is zoned multiple-family residential, it's not single-family, it's not commercial. Specifically, there are criteria within our ordinance for multiple-family residences that may not necessarily apply to a childcare facility. So one of those has to do with, in section 42, 3.10.9 of the zoning ordinance, it does not permit for a single building to exceed 125 feet in length. Again, the intent of this is more for like a multiple-family housing type of look, so we don't have row-style housing. There's more diversity in terms of the housing. However, in this instance, because the use is a proposed childcare building, the building itself does exceed this 125 feet. It's 132 feet. So it does exceed it by seven feet. However, our zoning ordinance does allow for the Planning Commission to consider acceptance of the proposed building in the RM district to be larger than 125 feet. So that would be a consideration, the length of the building, in accordance with our ordinance by the Planning Commission. So that kind of in a nutshell encompasses the use itself and how it kind of fits within the zoning classification and within our ordinance. So now moving a little bit more into the kind of the nuts and bolts of the site plan. As I stated earlier, the proposal is for a one-story building to be located, as you can see, situated on the site with a parking field along, kind of facing Telegraph. I was wrong, sorry. As long as hugging along to the south of the building. There is currently, if I look at the aerial, there is an existing non-improved curb cut, which exists here on Telegraph. That is to be removed, is actually required to be removed. MDOT required that removal. And then in addition, the current curb cut, it will be, the site will be served by one curb cut. Neither of which are the existing curb cuts. The new curb cut to serve the site will provide a sole ingress and egress into the site, which is located more here centralized. And that will be designed to meet all criteria as required by MDOT, as this is a, Telegraph is under the jurisdiction of the Michigan Department of Transportation. Other than this curb cut and this work within the MDOT right-of-way, there are no other proposed changes to Telegraph Road itself. They do meet the requirement by having four lanes on Telegraph. They do have the ability to have a D cell lane as to be able to access the site without there creating any issues on the main thoroughfare. So that is something that has been reviewed and looked at by MDOT, the access to the site. So in addition to this, the building itself, they do provide, as I stated earlier, a total of about 9,500 square feet of outdoor play area space. Specifically, their design is that there is a fenced-in play area that is encompassed along the northerly side yard as long as within the rear yard. This area here, this play area, abuts carports to the Samaritan site. And as I stated earlier, the northerly play area here abuts an existing eight-foot masonry wall that goes to the condos to the north. And they are separated into different zones and different areas based on age groups of the children. And because we do have some, what we consider accessory structures, which are play structures located in what's a side yard, they need to get a variance for accessory structures located in the side yard. Additionally, they do have one play structure, which is located here in the rear, which does exceed the 14-foot maximum height for an accessory structure. So that would also need a variance for the height exceeding 14 feet. That measurement comes in at 17.5. So those are the variances as it relates to the accessory structures. Additionally, the area, the play area is proposed to be fenced in. They are proposing a six-foot high, actually, I'm sorry, that's not the right elevation. They are proposing a six-foot-high chain-link fence, which will extend along this, just here, along to the northerly corner of the building and extend around towards the back and then hug down here to enclose the entire play area. And then there's fencing in between the play area as to allow for, as I stated earlier, different age groups to be able to interact within those areas. So having a six-foot fence requires a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And since I'm talking about variances and fencing, I will continue. They are proposing a four-foot decorative fence along the front sidewalk of the building. The intention is, if I show the floor plan, the intention is that the children can exit through the classrooms onto the exterior and then be ushered down to the play area through a safe, secured area of that four-foot fence. So that would be a variance as well. However, again, once I get into that landscape plan, I can show you the applicant also provided additional vegetation and screening along that fence, that four-foot fence in the front as to kind of shield the appearance, if you will, but that would require a variance. So again, as we go back to the site, as I stated, the one ingress and egress, which is provided to the site, there is a total of 46 parking spaces, which does meet the requirements within our zoning ordinance. And then with 46 parking spaces, they are required to have six parking lot trees, which also has been provided. So the site itself, as we're looking at here, there is a dumpster enclosure, which was proposed to be accessed straight from the curb cut from Telegraph to the rear of the site. The materials have been provided as a masonry enclosure with wood gates as required by ordinance. So that has been satisfied. Additionally, there is, if I move to the, oops. So anytime we have a site plan that's provided to us, we always have, the applicant provides the appropriate turn radii in and out of a site to identify that they can satisfy the largest truck that our fire department has. So that's what you have here on your screen. The applicant has provided and it has been reviewed by our fire marshal to determine that there is appropriate access and circulation for the fire trucks to be able to service the site. Again, as you can see here, highlighted on your screen, there is the floor plan made up of a series of classrooms. The floor plan and the site itself does not have a kitchen. Instead, what they have is kind of a warming area and a warming kitchen where they provide snacks for the children. So essentially, the floor plan, as you can see here, provided on your screen, is predominantly made up of classrooms for the various different age groups for the daycare. This is showing the elevations of that masonry enclosure, in which I had talked about the dumpster enclosure with the gates. And then also, this is the fencing that is being proposed. There's the chain-link fence that I had stated earlier, as well as the decorative fencing that I stated earlier. So now, this brings us to our landscape plan. The landscape plan, they are required to provide, as I stated, the six trees, which have to be within the parking lot area. That requirement has been met. There's some, a tree proposed here within the parking field, as well as some trees added along this parking area too, as well. And then additionally, they are required to provide that green belt along Telegraph Road. And they have provided a variety of trees and shrubbery that does meet, was reviewed by our landscape architect. Within your packet, you do have a report dated December 20th, 2023, from Michael J. Duel, which indicates that the applicant is deficient by 84 caliper of inches for the tree replacement. So based on trees that were removed from the site, based on what they're proposing to add, there is a deficiency of 84 inches of caliper. Caliper is the measurement of the width of the tree. Our trees, our ordinance requires that each tree that's planted has to be a minimum of a three-inch caliper. So if you think of, if they are 84 inches shy, that would be, their opportunity, their choice, if accepted as part of the site plan, would that be that they would be required to contribute to the Woodlands Trust Fund? And as part of that, they would have to determine that deficiency of caliper, we actually would have to have them provide us with the nursery cost of that deficiency. And there is a value that is determined. So there is the Woodland Fund money, if it is accepted for their deficiency. They do have the ability to make up that money, pay into the Woodland Fund. The Woodland Fund is then used for various projects or different items throughout the township. So just to let you know that that is one area in which they are deficient in. I did mention the dumpster enclosure, which also is being provided some evergreen screening to help shield from the adjacent property, which is the Samaritan to the east. And additionally, I stated earlier that they are proposing a total of, let's see, I know I have it in here. I know they are providing a significant amount of trees, as you can see, that are along this northerly lot line and then hugging all the way back around the play area. They are proposing all this planting, and that will meet the criteria within our zoning ordinance that says that all childcare facilities need to be screened from adjacent properties. And that was also something that the Design Review Board wanted to ensure that that, and you'll see that within your minutes in your packet, wanted to ensure that that was accomplished, which that has been provided for. And in terms of parking and circulation, kind of just doubling back in terms of traffic, we do have, the applicant does provide a traffic impact study, which is also required for any of our site plan applications. That traffic impact study was reviewed by our traffic engineer. And his report from Fishback Engineering dated November 8th, 2023 finds that the traffic impact analysis was completed consistent with accepted traffic engineering practices and finds that the proposed development is expected to have minimal impacts on the surrounding road networks. And again, just to reiterate, any future development in that southerly portion, that any new site plan that would be coming in, there would have to be a new traffic impact study. All the new information would all be required in look at the site as a whole. And moving on, in terms of the criteria for, oh, I'm sorry. I might as well look ahead here to the elevations that are provided. The colors are in Arctic white. The building materials are, it's got a rather minimalistic design in terms of coloring. You can see on the rendering here that the landscaping is being provided in front of that four-foot fence, as I noted earlier. So this would be the view from Telegraph Road. The building materials are consistent with the, you know, the design and architectural nature of the township. It is consistent of a metal roof, board and batten siding in Arctic whites, and a stone cap wainscoting along the base of the building, shutters, and decorative weather vane elements on the rooftop, which is not in this. Is that removed from the elevations, the weather vane?
It's actually in the upper part of the roof. You can barely see it.
Oh, okay. I think this is the weather vane. So this, so this give you a view of the elevations. So this would be the view coming on Telegraph. Additionally, the applicant, as required with any site plan, submitted, have provided a photometric study indicating that their pole-mounted lighting that's within the parking field does not exceed 20 feet from height, from grade, as well as that are downward shielded. And that, as demonstrated on the photometric plan, there's no light or overflow onto adjacent properties. Here's an example of the materials, as I had mentioned, in terms of coloring. Here's another rendering. Any rooftop mechanicals will have to be screened from public view. As you can see, it's been provided here on the elevation, showing that there is some screening mechanisms provided to shield rooftop mechanicals. There was a discussion in terms of mechanicals, actually, I do want to double back to that. There was a discussion that was had at the Design Review Board regarding a generator on site, in which the Design Review Board, in their experience of having some sites come back after the fact generators, had asked the applicant to please consider where they would put a generator, if and when they were to install a generator. And the applicant has since, and they can speak to this as well, have had conversations with ownership. And the ownership has indicated that they do not have any intention of having a generator on the site. So there is no site location for a generator. So I just want to share that with you. What we do have is a proposed transformer, which is going to be located along this northerly lot line. Again, there's that eight-foot masonry wall here. But I forgot to highlight that earlier in terms of a variance because ground mounted mechanicals are required to be immediately adjacent to the building. And in a rear yard, in this instance, it's not immediately adjacent to the building and it's in the side yard. They are providing, that is, they are adding, again, the evergreen planting in here as to try to shield that transformer. And then with the eight-foot masonry wall to the north, the only visibility would really be from the playground area to the south. Lastly, signage. There was a discussion at the Design Review Board as well regarding signage. And I certainly can have the applicant speak to this as well. The expectation, and as stated within your staff report, they do have some examples. They have an example, a ground sign that they're seeking to locate on Telegraph. And they're also showing some round signage along the elevations, as you can see up here on the graphic. But at the, we are anticipating and have informed the applicant that they will need to make a separate Design Review Board application. I think they kind of want to maybe get some feedback from the board and see what the thoughts are in multiple signage. They do understand, obviously, that anything, there's only one sign that would be permitted, that would be the same in the RM district. RM district, multiple-family would be allowed one ground sign. So obviously, anything beyond that would require a variance. And then here is just some site photos of the site. Maybe things were just a little bit greener. And so the proposed use has been reviewed by our various departments, as well as we have reviewed it in consistency in review of our special land use criteria, in which, under special land use criteria, we look at, is there any significant impacts to adjacent properties, whether it be smells, noises, light, anything that would have a negative impact to the public health and safety and welfare of the area? And there is nothing on this site plan that has been identified to have any concerns as it relates to that special land use review. Nothing, no odors, other than customary associated with childcare operation. No impact of the lights, as I had reviewed earlier, that there is a photometric study that's been provided. As well as, it is harmonious with the area. It is off Telegraph Road, north of Maple, tucked into that multiple-family residential. So it does comply in terms of the location. And lastly, we do have reviews from our various departments. Environmental Engineering and Environmental Services have included, there is a report in your packet dated December 27th, 2023, noting the requirements of engineering plan review if the Township Board shall approve the site plan. And one of the conditions of that approval, which I want to make note of, which is in your packet, is receipt of a written approval from Oakland County Water Resource Commission allowing the applicant to discharge on the site stormwater to the Nichols Drain, which is similar to the former St. Andrews Church. So I'm sure the applicant could probably maybe shed some light or give any updates on that, if anybody has any question particular to that. As I stated, the fire department has reviewed it. They do not have any issues, as well as the police department. This did have an opportunity to go before the Design Review Board on December 6th, 2023. You can see within the motion, as I think I highlighted all the areas, noting that the rock wall in the rear of the yard must be screened. There is a small 24, about a 24-inch, so two-foot-high boulder retaining wall along the back property line. It's about Samaritan due to a great change. But they have added the evergreen screening along that back property line, as questioned by the Design Review Board at their December 6th meeting. As I also covered the fact that there is no proposed generator to be shown on the site plan, as there's no plan in the future for them to install a generator. And then a separate application for future signage. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I have provided in here the Planning Commission considerations to consider under what criteria they would forward this on to the, it would be the Township Board. But then the applicant would make a stop at the Zoning Board of Appeals prior to going to Township Board. And those suggested considerations are compliance with the requirements noted by the Township Departments, compliance with the requirements noted by the Township's landscape architect, seeking dimensional variances request from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and applying to the Design Review Board for the overall signage proposal. With that, again, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I also, we have our applicants here as well that would be able to answer as well.
All right, first we'll bring it back to the commission. Any questions for Patty?
I have one for Andrea.
Andrea, I'm sorry, I meant Andrea.
It has to do with the landscape. The building's very attractive. It fits in well with the township. It's nice to see that there's a need for this type of business and indicates that there's younger families moving in, which is always a great thing. My only question has to do with the landscaping.
Sure.
So I understand that the landscaping and So I understand that the landscaping in front is very attractive and I think is harmonious and fits in well. My concern has to do not with the north as much as the east. I have some questions about that.
Okay.
So how, is it five feet to the east?
Oh, let me pull up the large set. You mean the setback?
No, the, how tall is the landscaping? The bushes, the trees, the bushes, whatever. East facing the senior apartments. Covering the boulder wall.
Then in. I, so I have here that the overall play area, the landscape plan shows five-foot-high skyrocket junipers proposed on the exterior of all fencing along the northerly and easterly rear yard play areas. So five feet.
Okay. And how tall is the fence there?
The proposed fence in the rear yard would be six feet. And, but with that two-foot retaining wall, because of the grade change, the intention would be that the landscaping would meet to the top of that fence. So we might want to clarify that with the applicant.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything?
I've got plenty. I have a lot of questions. Some of them are just general, because I want to understand the use. And some of them pertain to the site. And then I know you made it clear that we're not discussing the south site because it's going to be a separate site plan. But in creating that south parcel, I want, and I assume it's multiple, right?
Correct.
Do we know if that can be developed as multiple without variances? Just because of the size and what the setbacks and things are? Or do you think that we created, we're creating a site that, when it comes back to us eventually, it's going to need multiple variances?
The applicant heard very directly from the Design Review Board that the expectation, moving forward, is that anything being proposed would not create any non-conformities with the site plan. That would, that would be the directive of the township, is that there's no, the expectation would be that anything that's proposed for that southerly parcel would comply with the provisions of our ordinance and not render anything with this site non-compliant. So to answer your question, have we created something that's, could it be impossible to develop? I would say no. But until we see something and know what the options are. But I, the message has been very clear since the beginning, meeting with the applicant of our, in a perfect world, we probably could have seen maybe two buildings on the site and it would have been a joint, you know, a joint site plan or what have you. That's not the case.
I just, I don't know the width, so it's hard for me to tell whether I could, if I was going to develop it, could I put a multiple development and still meet all the setbacks and not need variances? And on that same exact line of thinking, MDOT is not very accommodating when it comes to multiple drive approaches. And before I ask that question, I heard you say that they provided, where is it? Forty-five parking spaces, did I hear?
Forty-six.
And how many are, that's what they provided, but how many are required?
Sure.
And that has to do with the MDOT question, comment.
How many are required? I'm going to have to look at the site plan, just give me just a minute. The applicant is indicating to me that the requirement is exactly the amount that's being provided. Let me just double check here on the site plan.
Well, the reason I asked that question when I started to talk about MDOT is because I was wondering if we should consider having one drive approach for both sites. And then we might, if we did that, I don't know if the applicant is interested or if the township is. I know MDOT would like it. We'd have to lose a couple spaces to be able to approach the south site. And I didn't know if that would create a deficiency or not. That's why I asked, how many are required?
That's a good question. The applicant is, the requirement is 46 spaces and 46 spaces are being provided.
Because it's difficult enough to try to develop that. And again, we don't know, but we're anticipating because of the narrow, what's left and there's an angle in the back. And then we have to argue with MDOT about another drive, because they don't like, when Bruce built Hillside Furniture, a major piece of property on Telegraph, they didn't even want him to have an approach on Telegraph. And our friend, the late Dave Payne, had to get involved to get them to approve it. So I was wondering if we should consider causing one approach to be, to serve two properties?
And I'm sure the applicant can shed some light on their conversations they've had with MDOT, but I know there's been ongoing discussions as well as input from our fire marshal regarding access to the site. At this, at this point, I would just, we would consider what is being presented and what's been reviewed. Obviously, the understanding moving forward is that there's going to be, there could be some hurdles in the way that this is being created of what the uses will be for that southern portion, that's.
And all we're trying to do is look forward and not create them if we can help it, that's all.
Correct. Understood.
Some are just general questions. Are we actually here to recommend two actions, one for site plan and one for special land use? Or is it considered one action?
Generally, it's one action.
One action? And you, the eight-foot wall that you mentioned to the north, did you say that's existing or that's?
That's existing, correct.
That's existing, okay, okay. And one of the things you said is the daycare is allowed because it's surrounded by the RM on all three sites?
Correct.
What are the zoning districts in the township, would a daycare be allowed? Is this, is this the only, is it allowed, for example, in a commercial? Is it allowed? And I have a hard time understanding, when you look at the plan, it's got a lot of classrooms. How does, how do we differentiate between daycare and a school? Is there certain criteria that?
Well, I mean, generally speaking, a daycare is privately owned. School, I mean, generally speaking, a school is, I mean, this is a privately owned for, for profit, which would, that's one difference.
Yeah, but there could be a school that's privately owned for profit. I mean, is, does the ordinance recognize?
The ordinance recognizes that difference. And we've actually had previously discussions about the site specific to that, actually. That it would have to be, it has to be a non, it has to be like a for-profit operation, school.
So if I had a for-profit school, would it be allowed somewhere where daycare might not be allowed? I don't know the difference, I guess.
I.
Just.
Have to pull the RM. I see.
Something to do with the way it's licensed. It's not licensed for education.
Right, but in the eyes of our ordinance, can we put a daycare anywhere that we can put a school?
Childcare centers are permitted as a special land use in the RM district, a special land use in the B4 district, which actually is a special classification created by the township board along the Telegraph corridor, if so designated. So it is very specific to where it is permitted, as childcare facilities.
Okay.
To be honest with you, this is probably one of the few sites in our township that would comply with that.
Schools are permitted in more places. So if somebody were to put an operation like this in a different zoning district and call it a school, is it the same, I'm just curious how that works?
With respect to schools, depending on the nature of the school and the operational plan and the intention of that school, that would be part of our evaluation. You know, is it a ancillary use to a place of worship? Now, we do have a lot of daycare operations in some of our places of worship. And, you know, so that's an example where we have them within the township, which is permitted. As far as schools themselves, they are permitted in the single-family zone district, as we know, with our public and private schools. Beyond that, we would have to do a deeper dive, if you will, of what other classifications. There could be a dance school or things like that, you know, which, which maybe you're not really speaking to. But we would have to look at how that is specifically addressed and/or defined in some respects in our ordinance.
What if somebody put a school and, you know, schools are allowed in a lot more zoning districts than the daycare?
Correct. In the single, correct?
Is there a different way to define it? Because somebody could build a school and use it for daycare, but there's no real way to tell that, what's the difference between daycare and school? If you're teaching people and, anyway, I just didn't know if there was a specific section of the ordinance that differentiates. So speaking of the variances, the, exceeding the 125-foot length, the Planning Commission has the authority to approve it without a variance.
Correct. That is correct.
So are the variances, I think I see five, but I want to make sure.
Sure.
The side yard. I can't read my writing, but it's something about the side yard setback and then.
So the, the variances include transformer in a side yard not immediately adjacent to the building.
Okay.
A fence exceeding four feet.
Okay.
A fence in a front yard. And a play structure exceeding 14 feet. And then for accessory structures, play structures in a side yard.
Oh, accessory structure, so there's five variances.
Correct.
Okay. And.
Really all kind of designated more to that child outdoor play area than really anything else.
And the deficiency in the calipers handled with money, just like we did?
Correct.
We know all about that.
Correct. Yes. He's speaking about another site plan that had the same requirement.
The storm discharge, you said that the church used to discharge into that county drain?
Correct.
So the, our engineering department wants a letter that says they can still do the same thing?
Correct.
And you, you mentioned that the applicant is interested in hearing the board's opinion of signage and.
I, yeah, I would say I don't want to speak for them, but I would imagine that they're, they're having some conversations with corporate and kind of get it some direction.
I mean, I support, as you know, because I come here to the ZBA, I support the right to have a ground sign and a wall sign. That's my opinion. And I don't, I don't think I have any more questions, but I really believe that we have to know a little bit more about the south so that we're not coming back and saying, why did we allow this when we knew there was going to be so many variances? That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions?
I have a pertinent question, maybe, perhaps. It's a daycare. I guess I'd like to know what kind of age group?
Sure.
And secondly, where's the recess area or activity center? Is that inside, outside, no side?
Sure. So let's go back to the ones, so the, it is a daycare. The ages it serves are ages six months to six years. And then the hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 6:30. And just to, just a reminder, in RM, we don't have the standard in terms of a special land use if you open after or before seven. So those are the hours. In terms of the play area, they are providing these, there's three designated play areas outside based on age groups. They have a, specifically three areas. Let's see how they divide it up. One area, which is located in the northerly side yard, is for the young, early preschool kids. The play area located in the rustierly rear yard is for preschool and after-school aged children. So kids that may go there for just after care, before care for school, which is not uncommon for daycares, for anybody who's had to run their children back and forth to daycare facilities. And then they also have an infant-aged play area. So the three areas are defined and separated by fencing for the designated age groups. And then they have play equipment within those play areas designated for that age group. And then in terms of interaction or activities that occur indoor, I'm sure that's part of their daily regimen.
And then the pickup and delivery, I guess, or pickup, the drop-off and pickup, where in the parking lot there?
So they require their parents to park and bring the children in. And bring, in park and bring the children out. So there's not a, you know, common drop-off, pick-off, pickup area. So it's going to be operated more just parking, get your kid, come back out. Like more of a shopping center, I guess, as opposed to a queuing, waiting line of, that's their, that's their business model.
Where's the main entrance? Can you point that out to me?
The main entrance would be here, let's see.
Somewhere there.
Main entrance is here towards the front. And let me go back to the elevation.
If there was, there was a fall or an accident or something?
This is the Telegraph Road frontage, this would be the main entrance, I would presume, here.
So if there was an internal accident or injury or illness or whatever, EMS was satisfied with access to get into the building and out of the building and fire?
Correct. Yes, our fire marshal is very thorough when he reviews access to the site circulation, drive aisle with requirements. And then again, as I stated, having those, providing our truck radii for the applicant to specifically use the templates that match our fire trucks, very specific.
Very good. Okay.
Yes, John.
I'm sorry, I may have missed this, but the parcel is the entire bounded area. There's no split in the parcel.
There is no split. Not at this time.
So we're looking at a proposed project for this parcel.
Correct.
For them to come back and put another building on there is a complicated adventure with the single parcel. I think we have to look at it on the face of what's applied for here. Secondly, I also concur with the sign advocacy of ground mounted and building mounted personally. I also concur with my fellow board member that this is a great sign for the youth incoming to the area. And I thought the plans are very thorough.
Thank you.
Goodness, John.
I am.
I just have another comment.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to concur on the sign issue, especially being on Telegraph. They had a ground-mounted sign and one sign on the building that is not ostentatious, too large. Certainly, I would be in support of that.
Is there any discussion about this conversation of the generator? Because I'm concerned, operating a business in this township for 40-some years and living in this township, we all know that we have horrible, it's three miles an hour and the power goes out. My generator went off twice in the last three weeks. And I'm concerned because of the children. God forbid, you know, it's the middle of the day and it's thunderstorm and it's dark out then all of a sudden. And how are these children going to be safe?
That's actually a great question for the applicant.
I was oriented to that question myself.
Well, let's see, once he presents his case.
Yeah.
I have to concur. We were talking about that before, especially because, as we know, we've had other situations where developments have come back after the fact for generators and which they should have really presented with the original plan. And as a result, it caused all sorts of gyrations and problems and complications as far as the parking field, the, where was it going to go? The screening, additional variance issues. And I concur certainly that the, especially when you're talking about anyone, especially children. And in this township, it's kind of surprising that a generator is not considered part of the original plan. Can't tell them what to do. Well, I can tell them what to do, but I can't force them. And I think that it's very, it's not well thought out not to include a generator.
And I can, again, attest, operating a building, mine was substantially larger than that. But it's, it paid for itself in the first five years, let's say. Now, I was running a retail business, but, you know, I, and I don't know that they'd lose revenue. Electricity went off at 12:00 noon. You have to call and have the kids out. I don't know how that works, but.
Sure.
It's a big mistake. Big mistake.
On that note, would you like me to, I can have Mr. Egan, Bradford Egan, I've been working with him. He's a representative for the, for the landowner. If you'd like to come up and answer any questions, maybe speak specifically to the comment regarding generators?
Before, I got one other question before we get to that.
We do have to have a public hearing too.
Sorry?
Public hearing as well.
I know. But the question I have is.
Why, forget.
A daycare is, what, what zoning is a daycare permitted in?
Multiple-family residential. When surrou, surrounded. Multiple-family residential, when surrounded by multiple-family residential, which in this unique case, it's able to meet that criteria. And as Patty stated, there is a B4 zoning classification within our ordinance. We don't have any B4 properties. It is sort of a, sort of an overlay district, I guess, as certain portions of Telegraph Road that would be permitted. So those, that's it.
So it's, but it's not permitted in a single-family residential?
Correct, as Patty stated, we do have some as ancillary to places of worship.
No, I'm not talking about pre-standing.
But as a standalone, you're correct, it's only permitted under those.
Is that something recent, or is that, does that go back a long ways? In other words, if there was one that it could be grandfathered in, that it's there and it stays?
Could very well be, just as presently as we are looking at the ordinance. It is not identified as a permitted use, if it's not identified, it's not allowed. But there are occasions where we do have uses because of just their nature of when they developed or been reviewed, that they are, you know, existing. And obviously, this is separate from any of the residential daycare facilities in residential neighborhoods.
That's what I'm talking about.
That is governed by the state, of which we have no authority.
Daycare or?
Childcare.
Sorry?
Childcare, yes.
Oh, it is?
Like under, like under.
That's what I was wondering about.
Yes, that is a, that is a separate use, that the township actually has no review authority. It's only when you have more, I think up to 12 children, then you have to have more specific conditions.
Okay.
Based on state law, but we don't have those prescribed specifically in our local ordinance.
What did you call that? What was the name that you used for that use?
Childcare, you said.
Daycare, daycare for childcare? Childcare, yeah.
Oh, childcare, I thought.
So that makes, that's different from this?
Correct, yes.
Okay, very good, all right, any, anything else? Okay, then, why don't we hear from you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you.
My name is Bradford Egan, I'm with 814 Development. We are a local organization right at 12 and Woodward, but we are a national developer. We partner with concepts that enrich communities. Things like daycare centers, swim schools, urgent care facilities, things like that, and we do that nationwide. Which brings us to the daycare facility that we're talking about today. To give you a little bit of background on Primrose, they have, they've been in business for 40 years. They have over 450 locations nationwide. And they are known as one of the highest esteemed nationally accredited daycare companies in the nation. What we're proposing today, Andrea went over extensively with you. I certainly have answers to a lot of the questions that you have already brought up and can answer those, you know, when we're ready to do that. But we are talking about a single site. The southern portion of the site, I'll address that first. That, we initially had up for sale because the Samaritas community was up for sale. And we were approached by a bidder that was going to bid on the property. And they were going to purchase the southern portion of this site so that they would have a line of sight into their community. And at the last minute, that bid process was ended and negated, taken off the table. So that negated any opportunity to sell that site to those particular people. With this southern site, it would be subject to, you know, a full approval of the process that Bloomfield Township would require. It's zoned, multi-family, multi-family in Bloomfield Township, as you well know and have been told, is extremely tight in regards to what they will allow. You can't put an office building up in that zoning district. You can really only put a daycare facility or, you know, we, early on, going back, we had a prospective tenant when we had two sites on the, two buildings on the site. And they were more of a daycare facility for special needs children. So that is no longer the case. We are looking at it as a full one-site development. And we've developed it in that way and approached the ordinance in that way. In regards to the fencing, let's, let's touch on that first. The fencing on the north side and on the east side is six-foot fencing. Okay, thank you. So the northern portion of the site and the eastern portion of the site, this faces, these are carports right here for Samaritas. That six-foot fencing is required for safety of the children. We don't want someone to be able to come over, reach over the fence and be able to take a child. The four-foot fence in the front of the building, which is screened as required in the landscape plan, that's necessary because all the, all the classrooms have a doorway that go out to the play area. So the classrooms that are in the front of the building have a doorway that will go out and be fenced in so the children don't have the capability and are always in an enclosed area when they go to their designated play area. The play area to the north is kind of a preschool area. So children from, say, one to three or four. This area on the east side in the center, those are the older children, say, four to six. And then this area here is for the infants. Six months to a year, year and a half possibly, when they get to that toddler stage. What we did, and I think there was a little bit of confusion in regards to the rock, rock wall when we were in front, when I was in front of the design review board. The fencing, the screening of the fencing was the priority. And we initially had the rock wall up against the fencing on the play area. What we've done with this site plan is we moved the rock wall to the property line. It's approximately three feet tall. And then, from there, we created a landscape bed so that we could properly screen the fence. So we were told you had to screen the entire fencing area. And even to this north side, we show deciduous plantings, evergreens, along that northern property line between the fence and the eight-foot demising wall with the condo association. I would like to let you know that I did speak with and meet with three members of the Cranbrook Chase condo association. I met with Sandy Morrison, who's the president, Shay Pendre, who's the vice president, and Tom Decourt, who's the secretary. We met at the Bloomfield Township Library, excellent facility, by the way. We spoke for an hour, they were very engaged, they were very complimentary. They saw the use as being extremely beneficial to the community and also to the surrounding area, meaning their development. There was no negatives that came out of that, they didn't, they didn't bring up anything that they didn't like about it. The only thing that they did ask us was, when we are planting or around their eight-foot fence, they asked us to, you know, just kind of be careful because of the fence or the masonry wall is a few years old, I guess. So they just asked us to be careful when we are building around it. In regards to the generator, I understand your concern. We did have initial conversation with the tenant, they have not put a generator on any of their facilities. I'll revisit that with them, I can't guarantee that they'll, they'll go for a generator, but I will put that in front of them again.
I'm not sure that they have any businesses in Bloomfield Township, though. We lose power all the time.
And I, I'll make a point to let them know pretty clearly that that's been stated and that's the case in the township. And then we'll just have to let them decide. With that said, if they did choose to go with the generator, should that be their direction to us? This is a transformer that not only has the evergreens on either side of it, but it also has some smaller plantings that screen the transformer. We could set a generator right in that same space and use it, use the landscaping that we're showing to screen it as well. So that, the electricity for the, for the property comes in this north end. So that would be the ideal place to put it. It would be in the side yard, it would be well screened by the landscaping, and we could address it that way if they chose to go with the generator. If I could, I'd like to address the MDOT question. MDOT has, we've, we've gone down the road with MDOT with regard to this site. This is the only approach cut that they will allow with regard to this site. Whether that be the southern portion of it, this is all we're getting right here. We have to take out the curb cut that's here, we have to take out the curb cut that is to the northern portion of the property. This curb cut.
Put a new curb cut in, take two out and put a new one in.
Take the two that are on, that are north of this, that we're showing. There's one about right here, and then there's one about right here. And I think that the, from the center line of this curb cut to the south, to the center line of the street that is accessed for Samaritas, it's 205 feet from center to center. So they would not allow another curb cut. For, if, for some reason, if we had someone that approached us and said, yeah, we want to put, you know, four units of multi-family residential and we can fit it in this way on the site, they would have to use our curb cut, this single curb cut, to access that road. What we would do in that instance, if that were ever to take place and was possible, is there's actually, if you can go back to the original site plan, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
These, these, yes, these parking, these two parking spaces right here, those would go away. But before we sold the property to whoever we sold it to, if they wanted to put, you know, however many multi-family units they could fit on there within the ordinance, we would encumber that southern site so that they would have to make sure that there was those two parking spaces that were then allotted to our development so that we would never have a deficiency in regards to the parking for our use. As Andrea had mentioned, the tenant requires full security for the children. The parents have to park their cars, they have to walk the child into the facility, and then they have to do the same when they pick up the child, they have to walk in, get the child, walk them out to their car, so they're always in a secure situation. Other questions that were brought up? The drive aisle for the fire truck maneuvering. We did have a, in our initial review, we were asking that we could have the, the access road or the curb cut that was to the north to keep that and to have that be emergency access only, put up a gate, have a Knox box so that only the fire trucks or the fire department could access it in any way. But that was turned down by MDOT. They did not want the two, the two curb cuts, they wanted to get rid of both of them. I think primarily because of the alignment with the turnaround lanes in the boulevard of Telegraph. So they, they took those out of the plan and are only allowing for this curb cut. With that said, we had to actually shorten the front area of the drive aisle so that we could meet the 150-foot restriction on a fire truck use and allow for them to maneuver properly within that 150 feet. I guess I can answer any other questions that you might have? It would be my pleasure.
I have just one question I want to ask.
Yes.
Who owns the access road from Telegraph to the property behind on the southern edge?
That is, that's not our ownership, it's, I think it would be Samaritas.
They own that.
I believe so, we have no use of that curb cut. We have no easement, we have no use of it, there's no ability for a future curb cut in regards to getting to that southern parcel, if that's what you were thinking, yes.
Would be done, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, if we can go back to that east wall or gate, I mean fence, so it's six feet to the east?
It's six feet on the eastern side, the back side, and it's six feet here.
No, okay, and I understand.
To the north, it's four feet across the front. And if, if we looked at the rendering again, you'll see that all of that fencing is properly screened with evergreen deciduous junipers for the most part, there's nearly 100 of them.
Let's, when you say properly screened, so the east, the fence is six feet and how, and the deciduous are going to be five feet?
Well, they are, but, but they'll grow. I mean, we didn't want to put something in there that was all of a sudden going to be, you know, a little too high of a hedge. So getting back to, to what was discussed earlier, we, the rock wall was never an item that was brought up that needed to be screened when we were in front of the design review board. It's the fencing that needs to be screened. So what we did is we moved the rocks, the rock wall, so that we could meet the elevation change from the Samaritas parking area to our site. And we put the rock wall right on the property line or just inside the property line. And then that created a landscape bed in which we could, we could plant the proper screening for the fence. The other thing that we did, just so you're aware of this, after the DRB meeting, we shifted the building slightly to the east and that allowed us to create this planting area here in order to screen the front four-foot fence. So it actually took a little bit away from the playground square footage. It went from 9565, which I think Andrea had mentioned before, to 9505, I believe it is, or 04. But it was a minimal effect to the play area. The play area is, is more than adequate per ordinance to meet that need, but it did, it did get reduced by 150 square feet or so in order to allow for the screening of the entire fence all the way around.
Any other questions?
How many children, how many adults and children are in this facility at one time?
There are 202 prospective students or, or daycare, and there's 27 staffers. And that dictates the parking requirement.
And are they all, is, is the schedule, schedule for a one-year-old's not the same as a four-year-old's?
Correct, correct, so, you know, there's, there's traffic throughout the day. I would say your, your high points of traffic would be six to nine, nine-thirty, 10 o'clock in the morning. And then your pickup from, say, 3:30 or so to 6:30. Would be your, your higher capacity, your higher volume. But it is, you know, very dependent on the students and the, and the parents' needs.
My concern for asking that question, because I'm relating to where my children, my grandchildren, my children and grandchildren went to school. They went to a private school called Hill Elde School. And, and I think a lot of schools are like this, I know the church, when, when we were doing things for them, whatever, there's a drive line that people form and children, how are all these people walking in the parking lot at the same time?
So I will go back to the history of Primrose. They are methodical in the way that they operate these facilities. And they are, number one priority is safety of the children. Second priority would be the education of the children and the function of the building. And they, they don't have a drop-off area. You have to park your car, you have to walk your child in. And with their 40 years of experience at 450 locations, they know that they can meet that with this parking. that with this parking requirement, with 46 parking spaces, two of those being handicap accessible.
The other thing is the difference between a school and this. The school, they all come in the same time and they all pretty much leave the same time within a 15 or 20 minute, boom.
True.
Where this, as he said-
Bearing time.
It, it's more transitionary, you know, where it's, you know, you might have a couple of heavier hours here and there, but it is on and off throughout the day that the kids are being dropped off and picked up.
John, you go first.
Do you, do they have, pardon my ignorance, but do they have other facilities in the state or in the area?
I know that we are developing one in Novi that has not gone up yet. I do believe there's another location in, is it Canton?
I think there's one in Canton.
I think it's in-
One in Novi proposed for finishing up approvals for one in Rochester.
Yes, Rochester is the one I was forgetting.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mark Ellenberger with the 14 development as well.
Okay.
For, for us to back up.
All right.
Tom?
A footnote really, I have 200 children in there with, if I get only one way in and one way out, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
It's beyond my comprehension that that's a safe environment if something goes wrong in there. There's no, there's no exit other than one doorway in and one doorway out, the same location.
Each location, each classroom has its own exit. So there is absolute safety in regards to egress from the building. And each classroom, you can get out in seconds depending on where the fire, if there was a fire, would be. There is fire suppression in this building as well. So the, the building is protected with fire suppression to make it that much safer.
Well, I would put a footnote down that I have concerns about no air conditioning or, or in this case, as you mentioned, generator in case you have a breakdown of some kind of weather-related event or, or mechanical event with those type of children in a building like that. If it's a daycare center, then in my case, there should be-
There is air conditioning in the building.
I was just going to say that-
Yes.
Got to be air conditioned.
No, he's saying if there's a, if there's a failure, power failure.
Breakdown, yes.
Oh, sure.
Back to the generator.
He goes zero and there's no heat all of a sudden and light.
And there is, that is something that I will bring up with the tenant again and see if they'll-
Heavy, heavy duty bring up. If they need a call-
I don't-
Understood.
Not a problem. I don't share my fellow council members' concerns about generators. I think it's an overthought and overused demand. Certainly not something we can demand because it's not a code requirement.
No.
Heaven forbid the lights go out and they got to put their jackets on and go outside and play. I mean, what will happen? They'll start drinking from the hoses and all hell will break loose. Anyway, just a comment, there's tons of exits, which I saw with the floor plan. And the life safety will be taken care of with the building department. But the real question with that will be the front exits, in fact, all of them are in fenced areas.
There are gates.
So there'll be gates and-
Yes.
But signage and all that will be a part of the life safety plan. So I think it's more than covered.
We would, we would meet all the requirements with the fire department. There would be mapping inside the building that would-
Signage.
Indicate, you know, fire exit strategy and, and path throughout.
This is programmatically prescribed by your tenant.
Correct.
They've got 400-plus locations.
Correct.
And so they've dialed in the size, the rooms, the count for the lot, for the community.
Absolutely.
But they've never had, operated in this township.
This is true.
We need to also open this up for a public hearing too. Not that there's so many people here, but procedurally, we have to do that, so.
I, I will say that-
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. From an experience standpoint of 40 years and over 400 locations, I'm sure they have run into areas that may or may not have the best support in regards to electricity during storms or things like that. So as I said before, I will leave it up to them to decide whether or not that is a priority for them. I will express, you know, your, your desire to, to make sure that they're, they're putting forth the best, the best possible-
40-some years of history.
Right. I, I will, I'll pass those along to the tenant. But it, in, in the end though, it is their decision in regards to whether or not they want to go to that length to put a generator in. But I will, I will put that in front of it.
All right, let me open, open this up to the public if anybody, I don't-
Dolores?
Is he going to say something? Anybody have any comments?
Good question. How many, how many openings for each fence is, how many openings are there? Will people, strangers, might be able to get in or?
As far as gates?
Yeah, you said each classroom has its own gate.
Well, the entire, all the egress points in the classrooms are gated. The only place that's not gate, or is not fenced or gated, and the, and the fence gates have locking capabilities, so somebody just can't come in from the outside and get into, through the gate. So the only real ingress egress into the building from a person outside of that fence would be through the front door. The rest would be out of the classroom areas and whenever you step out of the classroom, you would be on a playground area that would be fenced in and also landscape screened.
All right. So now I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comments and whatever we want to say. Anybody have any?
I'd support it. I'll get out in front of it. I think they've done a nice job. First line of defense is our administration, which has obviously put you through the wringer. 120 pages of traffic count to tell you got to put a new curb cut in, but I think it's thoughtful. I think it's well done. I think your variances, if I was part of ZBA, I'd give them all to you. I think it's a great use for that spot. I think it's a handsome building. I don't think we can mandate a generator, so I don't think that should be included in our, in our motion, speaking to my fellow board members. I support it.
I'll support, if that's a motion, I'll support it.
No, wait, I want to have a discussion.
But I will say, it was not a requirement. It was a strong suggestion based on all of our experience here.
None of us grew up with generators, just for that.
I, I actually interpret it as, we're not telling you you need a generator, you should put one. All we're saying is we want you to have a space for it so that if they elect to do it in a year or five years, we're not involved because it's already approved. That's what we want to see.
So going back to what I had said previously, we do have the transformer on the north side that's heavily screened with landscaping, an eight-foot wall right next to it, a six-foot fence next to that, enveloped in landscaping and we could easily fit a generator in that same space, screen it appropriately and use that if the tenant chose to move forward with the generator.
I just, I have two comments. I have, first of all, when we look at this, we have to, I, this business about the, the southern portion, perhaps in the future, being something else with, I don't think that's even, needs to be discussed now, in my opinion. It's, we're talking about this whole piece of property as one thing.
That's correct.
In the future, if that comes back, it's got to be split. We have to look at lot splits, we have to look at a lot of other things. That's for future discussion, so I think, well, we're looking at the one, as one piece.
Correct.
The other thing, I, I'm disappointed in one thing and that's the use of a chain-link fence. It won't be more than a few years where that becomes a rusty, ugly hulk. They always do. Now, there are a lot of other fences that are just as secure for that purpose, made out of aluminum, made out of other materials that are more attractive. And I know we can't, I'm just saying what I think. Not that I'm going to say, not support this because of that. I just think, I wish that you could find another material. I know that it's screened, but still.
If I could address that?
Yeah.
In the front, on the westerly portion, we have, it's called a montage fence. It's a decorative fence that's four feet tall.
Right.
Around the perimeter, it is chain-linked, but it is black vinyl covered, vinyl coated chain-link fence. It's not, it's not anodized, you know, your typical anodized chain-link fence. We wouldn't want that and primrose wouldn't want that.
Within a few years, that gets rusty and it looks terrible.
Correct.
But, if that's what, okay.
So going back to primrose and the building in itself, again, this is one of the top daycare facilities accredited in the nation. And they not only have a quality standard for their daycare operation, but they also pull that into the materials that are used, the design that's used in regards to their building, alumina, you know, they've got a metal roof, they use the board and batten fiber cement board on the front, their Anderson windows, their double insulated doors, you know, everything that they do is first rate. So in regards to the chain-link fence, again, it would be black vinyl coated.
The rest of the whole building is very attractive. No question about it. It's a great use. I like it a lot. It just, I have a pet peeve, the chain-link, that's all. Okay.
Any motion?
Want to hear a motion?
Yeah, I can make my comment after the motion. I recommend that the planning board forward on to the township board for their consideration, approval of the site plan submitted here tonight, subject to the compliance with the requirements noted by the township departments, compliance with the requirements noted by the township landscape architect, seeking the dimensional variances requested or required or requested from the zoning board of appeals, and applying to the designing, design review board for the overall signage proposal.
Support of motion and support, any discussion on the motion?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
I, I agree that the use is, it's great. The architect is beautiful. Clearly, your team is very professional and you've done an excellent job. And, and obviously, we'll come to find out that primrose might be the premier operator in the whole country. But unlike my colleagues, I, I just, I can't support it without knowing what's going on in the south. I mean, you stated that it's for sale. We, I suggested that there might only be one approach allowed and you confirmed that. You also confirmed that we might have to lose two parking spaces. But we don't even have anything that says, if it's sold, you'll have an easement for those people to use it. I mean, I just think, without knowing that, I'm sure it'll get passed, but I just can't approve it without knowing those details. I'm sorry.
And I appreciate that and I can, I can clarify a little bit. We own the entire parcel.
Understood.
We are, we are proposing this development as a single parcel use without regard to a sale on the southern side. If a sale were ever to happen, you know, whether someone could do something on that parcel, whether the property to the rear wanted that parcel in order to have a little bit of viewing from Telegraph, a little bit of a gateway for their tenants to see their development, I think that could be something that, that could come down the line. There would have to be a full review and since we own the entire parcel, before we sold anything, before we split anything, we would make sure that we would encumber that southern parcel with the necessary parking that they would have to show, you know, the, whatever parking was lost, they would have to amend for that on the southern parcel and make sure that we had adjacent parking to our parking that met the need for the 46 spaces and that we never created a deficiency. So we would encumber the property before we even sold it. And that is, you know, just on the off chance that we find someone that wants to do something with that southern portion.
Yeah, I don't doubt it. I don't disagree. Everything you said is precise. All I'm saying is we'll look like fools when somebody comes in and says, "Well, we can't fit this and we can't do that and M.DOT won't give us the driveway and we don't even, we're not asking you to grant an easement to another parcel that you, you already own it, it's not even a separate parcel." I just have a problem with it, just me personally. I apologize.
No, and I understand your concern to, to kind of quell that concern. I would just say, they're going to have to go through the entire process that I've gone through for this parcel, which I can tell you is not an easy task.
I've gone through it myself and I understand.
Right. And so whatever, if someone wants to take a chance on that, one, the parcel would already be encumbered on the sale. So there would be never, there would never be a deficiency of parking on that, on our site because they would have to accommodate the parking because of the way the drive aisle would have to, to come down to the south. And then as far as accommodating, they would have to be within all the ordinance and setbacks and everything like that that would go along with the RM zoning classification.
And I appreciate that very much. All I'm saying is I don't know that it could be done and I'm sure you're not going to, your intent is not to make a future perk out of it, so.
But I think at that point, you would just, you would just deny the request for whatever they were trying to, to build on it. At that, at that point, it's in your hands.
It sounds simple, but we've had cases where people make claims and argue for variances and we just, I, I just don't want to put this board, whether I'm on it or not, in that position.
Yeah.
That's all.
All right. I think we can call for a vote now.
You're the chairman.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
You opposed as well?
I'm opposed, yeah.
Those two, the force of motion carries.
No, I opposed.
He opposed, I'm sorry, you see, then a motion doesn't carry. Okay. So what do we do now?
Let's persuade. Can we keep talking?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I highly respect your opinion, but I disagree in this instance. If I had a 50-acre development and I was only putting up 20 acres to figure out right now and I was mothballing the other 30, you're going to tell me you know what's going on with that before I get my 20 acres figured out? I don't think it's right on the if come of something that could happen to a piece of the parcel later. The board and the township retains the entire right to deny anything that comes before it that's non-conforming. And if somebody could figure out how to make that postage stamp work in the zoning that it is, well, God love them, you know? But if they come in here with 20 different variances, it's not going to happen. So why would you deny based on something that we don't know is going to happen? We're not creating a hardship for the parcel. He proposed the development for the parcel. We got to take it at its face value.
And along with that, I mean, all that's being presented is what is being presented was, which is the primrose project. Everything to the south is irrelevant. It could be just like it doesn't exist as far as I'm concerned. And it's been very clear from the design review board and from the building department and I would say, I think based on our history here, that the parcel to the south will be taken on, if it's ever presented to us, it will be reviewed and if it's workable, something and it meets our criteria and the ordinances, the zoning, then it will be taken with that criteria and either, either it will be approved or not approved.
Can I just add to your comment?
Yeah.
It's not even a parcel.
It's not a parcel.
It's not a parcel. The project is for this site plan. It's not a divisible parcel.
Right.
It's not a segregated parcel. We have a parcel under consideration. It's this address. Just like any other parcel for the, you know, for the doctor's office, for the oil change, for the car wash, for, those are the parcel. Whether they have excess footage over here, you know, what it really tells me, to be candid with you, is these people have dialed in a formula that they know is going to work because you could have had more parking, you could have done something else with, with, with the park, with the parcel that's, or the right remaining land that's available to you, you could have made more jungle gym space. You know, none of that's prohibited. Or you could have had a big area for a generator.
Bigger parking lot.
Bigger parking lot. So I, I just, I think we're hung up on the fact that they got this excess inventory of land that they're using.
Well, we have excess inventory. It's a stated goal that it's for sale. It's a stated goal that, that they have to remove two parking spaces to develop it. It's a stated goal that there's only, it's a stated requirement that there's only one approach. Do we have a landscape plan for the rest of the parcel? Is it irrigated? If you want to treat it like the parcel-
That's a good question.
You know, then are we going to landscape it and irrigate it?
That's a good question that probably should have been caught by the landscaper because it's one lot. It's one property.
Doc, why did you say no?
I have concerns about the internal environment, whether it's air conditioning or whether there's a generator for a safety backup, you, you've a rope, at least they identified where they would potentially put it if they changed their mind. But I didn't hear whether this is air-conditioned?
It is.
Yes.
It is. Yes, there's rooftop air conditioning.
I possibly can go along with it. I just have concerns about the safety factor and the environment.
From a, from a generator standpoint?
Yeah, well-
Because I can tell you-
My generator went out for a half an hour last night. No explanation. When the man came to maintain my generator, which is only five blocks from here to a half a mile, ninety-eight hours of operation of my generator, my home generator, for no apparent storm. So, we, you know...
With all due respect, a generator is not a life safety issue.
Well, it provides, provides safety for my home when I'm not there. My wife is there in the middle of the night or whatever else it may be, or daytime.
You got a bunch of small children. God forbid the lights go out.
It's not our responsibility.
I understand.
We can't mandate it.
No, we can't.
No, we can't.
The code does not require it. When I, when I first came on this board, umpteen years ago, I went through Michigan State University. They, they pay, I went through a series of courses, um, over almost a semester, almost, about what a planning commission is for, what the, what the state man, uh, uh, you know, says that we should be doing and what our job is and what our, what we're supposed to. And it's not to do some of the things we're talking about. It's to make sure the codes are met. It's to make sure that this traffic is, is proper, et cetera, and that, um, and, and, and other things, but not things about the future, about what maybe happened down the road or whether a part of it, or how it could be redeveloped in the future, or, or things that are not in the code.
I could add to that, Doc.
Okay, let me just finish. So, the point is that we're limited in what we can, we're really limited in certain respects in what we can ask, what we're asked to be done, or, and it would be improper for us to deny something on something that we're not even, we're not authorized to regulate.
But also, it's our job to approve those proposed projects that enhance our built environment and our community. And this service, again, it's a, an, a company that's done a lot of research, is telling us that this is a need in our community to be met. I think it's incumbent upon us to serve the community with, they meet all the requirements.
Is it a need to have air conditioning in a building?
No, it's not a requirement.
Okay.
But we do offer it.
I understand.
Yeah, that, you'd put yourself out of business if you didn't.
I understand. I'm trying to make a point. I would feel horrible if, God forbid, three years from now, there was a blackout and something horrible happened in that building because the lights didn't come back on in ten seconds. And I just, again, I don't understand. I, I understand we can't mandate it. But I have to live with myself in, in knowing that I approve something. And I, I understand the gentleman can't make a commitment to that because it's not your facility.
What I could tell you, though, is fire code requires that we have battery-operated backup lighting that comes on immediately when the power goes off.
Right.
So, there would definitely be light inside the building, and it would allow for the children to get out.
In the township or in the county and say, you don't have air conditioning. Many schools don't.
No.
Many schools don't have, most of them, almost all of them, don't have generators.
Understood.
So, you're ceiling one out because they don't have a generator.
This is in the schools.
What?
This is in the school. It's a business.
It's still a public facility where children are located. You said...
But it's a business. It's a business.
What's your distinction for that, though? What do you, what do you mean?
It's private. But what I'm saying is, even in the public environment, they're not required to have air conditioning. They, many of them don't. They don't have generators. And they have children in those buildings just as well, whether it's private or public school, whatever it is, or a school or a day, whatever.
And they didn't have them for a hundred years.
That's a silly comment. I have, I have no, I, I made no comment about the generator being required or air conditioning. Strictly planning, I believe we could... We got the generator, bro. Right. So...
Well, I can, I can, I can vote in support with reservation. And my reservations are already been discussed here.
I'll do the same.
If you have a sensitivity...
So, can we have another vote?
Only if a public voted in negative.
If it's been, if it's treated as one-site, should it be landscaped and irrigated? I don't know the answer to that question. I'd like to have another vote.
Could I add one, just one little caveat that I, I didn't think of it myself, but Mark Kellenberger, who's our director of development, mentioned again that this facility has to be licensed by the state to accommodate the daycare facility needs of the children. So, not only are we gonna go through your discretion on the site plan and the building itself, but the state is going to license it and make sure that it is safe for children.
And that's probably a higher order. I mean, you know, come right down to it. If it meets the state guidelines for, for putting children in, in confinement or whatever else it may be, a school or care center for twelve hours a day, you know, I'll yield to that.
I don't know. Do we need a, okay, I don't know procedurally. Do we need a motion to allow?
Make a motion to have another vote, please?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Would you like me to do a roll call?
Yes, roll call.
Okay, roll call. Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Selick?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Salz?
Yes.
Atto?
No.
Patanga?
Yes.
A motion carries five to one.
Okay, was that the motion to approve this or a motion to reopen the voting?
I think it was.
You asked for another vote.
I asked for a vote.
All right, so now, now we can have, now the motion, the same motion you can say on the floor, the same motion.
No, that was, that was the motion. I, we...
He was moved to have another vote.
Okay.
All right, let's just vote again, that's all.
He made his motion. I support it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed.
Five to one.
Still passes.
Now, the, now the motion to, I asked to sign, the board of trustees in a positive vote is approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck with your project. Thank you very much.
A great facility.
Appreciate your time.
It's a needed, needed, and, you know, but...
I, I, I think it's gonna serve the community well. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Next thing is election of officers. Every January?
We just did this.
What?
We just did this.
Well, it's a year. Last January, we did, we had about four meetings maybe, but, but January.
Okay, we want, we want off.
I'm sorry. If we're going to the officers, since we only had a minimal number of meetings last year, and, I mean, and even though it was minimal, they did such a fantastic job. We, we saw how good they are. So, I would say, the same slate, let's just repeat it again for...
My acclamation?
Second, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that takes care of that. Item's not on the agenda. Does anybody wanna bring anything up that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, I have a question. Who's, when you're not available, who's up next then?
Rich?
Oh, Richie, okay. All right, good. Because I had to do it once and I don't like it.
I told him I would only take the...
And you had to do it when there were four hundred people yelling at you.
The position if he agreed never to get sick.
That's the best. That's the best.
That is the best.
All right, um, next, anybody else have anything else they wanna bring up? Okay, the next meeting will be then Monday, January fifteenth.
Right.
Is it, you have, you know that it's gonna be anything on there? You have anything?
Sound right.
I don't believe so not this time. But there's lots coming down the pike. It's gonna be a busy year. There is a lot coming down the pike.
That's good. Okay, then I guess, uh, move, move to adjourn, somebody?
So, move.
It's moved. Second.
We're adjourned.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.